The next item on the agenda was a letter of support for state legislative bond bill for Minds in Motion Mobile Museum project. And Ms. Melanie Kerber, yes, if you could.
And I've got to bring two individuals up and around.
Yes, please do. Thank you. Gentlemen, yes. We will be right with you in two seconds. Thank you.
Sorry to hold you up that long.
Oh, no. I appreciate your having us tonight. I'd like to introduce Adriana Boncio, who is a member of our board, Spanish teacher. Brian is also a member of our board. I have a short PowerPoint to show you while we're getting set up. I have a short PowerPoint to do.
Could you do me a favor? Could you go to the podium until you have a seat?
Sure.
And then you can let us know who you are and what your position is.
Yes. Is this on?
Yes.
This is on. My name is Melanie Kerber, and I am a board member of the Minds in Motion Children's Museum. I'm here tonight to talk to you and hopefully help you understand the need for your support in a letter of support for a bond bill. If you take a look at our screen there, our name is Minds in Motion, and we are a proposed children's museum in Salisbury, Maryland. We're still in the startup stages, but it is our goal to bring a children's museum to Salisbury. Brian, can you advance that slide?
Let's full screen.
Just enter. And when we talk about this children's museum, this is all about commitment. This is a grassroots group of volunteers who came together and recognized the need to bring a children's museum to this area. And we are very dedicated to this cause and this activity. All right, Brian, you want to advance that? So if you take a look at our mission statement, and this is also included in the packet, basically what we want to do is provide a place for children to be very interactive. We want to develop critical thinking skills, higher-order thinking skills, discovery, exploration, problem-solving, intuition. The more students are having a practice in doing that, the more likely they are to get better at doing harder things. And I'll talk about math skills in just a minute. Our vision statement is to provide a place where children can be nurtured and also provide a meaningful experience for families. We have 8 million visitors every year to the eastern shore in Ocean City. In addition to that, we have Rehoboth, Dewey, Bethany. We have a lot of families in this area, 15,000 children in the Waukesha County School District alone. That's the largest school district on the eastern shore. And according to our feasibility study that was done by North Star Museums, we have 30,000 school-aged children, and that does not include pre-kindergarten that could benefit from having a children's museum right here. Our objective is to create lifelong learners prepared to step into careers. It is now a national requirement in school curriculum that children be exposed to careers and have an idea on the world of work. And we want to start that very young in our children's museum. All right, you want to advance that slide, Brian? If you take a look at some of our commitments to education, in the packet that I've given you, I have included some information on the Waukesha County Schools. I myself am a retired superintendent. I was a school administrator for many years. I ran four different schools, and I also ran a district. Schools nationwide, no matter what their demographics are, no matter what their financial situation are, they're all struggling. If you take a look at a school budget, and I'm sure you folks are familiar with this, 80% to 85% of that budget, right out of the gate, goes for salaries. So before you purchase the first pencil, the first textbook, the first whiteboard, you're talking about the majority of money going out the door to pay teachers and to pay staff. We want to help secure these skills in younger children. In 2017, Waukesha County placed second-to-last in kindergarten readiness. One out of three children was prepared for kindergarten. And what we'd like to do with this children's museum is increase that. We'd like to increase vocabulary and learning and language skills, fine motor skills, math. Children who, if you take a look at the math scores in Waukesha County right now, it's 38%. And that is below the state average, which is not that high. The state average is maybe 43%, 44%. Children who learn to do basic math concepts are able to develop higher-order thinking skills so they can problem-solve. They learn how to do hard things. They learn how to complete hard things. A children's museum offers a meaningful family experience. It also helps kids become more appreciative of diversity. They are able to understand differing points of view, and they are able to be more tolerant of others. All right, next slide, Brian. So where have we come so far? This group started in 2016, and they've come a fairly long way. We did a feasibility study that was done by the North Star Group. We have articles of incorporation. We've gotten grant awards. A few years ago, I received $15,000 from Salisbury University in their shore hatchery competition. We've received other grant monies. We've had a lot of media attention. We have a founding 50, which is the first 50 people that were able to give $1,000 each. We run two 5K runs every year. We've done galas. And we also researched in this area, the wisdom of bringing a children's museum here. The closest children's museum is 90 miles away in Annapolis. Many of our families do not have the wherewithal to make that as a day trip. Also, we have a website, and we have a board of directors. And our board of directors has been meeting for five years now. In the middle, you see a logo with the heart shape with the sun. That is the logo of nonprofit people, and that is a group out of Pittsburgh that we have hired to help coach us through a capital campaign. We need to raise $1 million for our brick-and-mortar museum. We are now looking at a space at the shops at Salisbury. It's an 8,000-square-foot space where Pennies used to be. There's a large peak that would be very visible from the road. And we have met with the mall management. They are willing to give us that space free for a year while we would refurbish it. We like the location very much, and it would provide ample parking because this would be open to a lot of school groups and a lot of families. All right, next slide, Brian. All right, and that paper right there, and it's also included in your PowerPoint, that identifies the solution. And basically, right now, Minds in Motion is at two places. One, we're working very hard towards securing a brick-and-mortar space that we would repurpose, and our capital campaign would raise $1 million to pay for that. The other is the bus, and I'm going to get to that in just one second if you want to move that slide up. We were trying to figure out a way where we could do more outreach, where we could get jump-started. We have not been successful in securing grant money, and we haven't been successful in securing grant money because we have not been able to get any seed money. I went out looking, and I found a woman who owns her own school bus, and she is donating that to Minds in Motion at the end of this calendar year. It'll be in June, at the end of this academic year. It's a 2008. It's in good condition. And if you look at the interior of that bus, and I'm speaking as a principal and a school superintendent that rode buses way too many times, I've never seen seats in such good condition. They are in mint condition, and we have now talked to three different companies that repurpose buses and what they would charge us to make that look like a mobile museum. You want to move that up, Brian? So if you take a look at this, this would have, this school bus would be repurposed to the point where kids would use this as a classroom. And if you look at the space underneath the bus where it says "interactive displays" and "space for portable exhibits", that is underneath the bus, and that would actually contain portable exhibits, and students would actually go onto the bus. And I'm going to show you in a minute what that would look like. There would also be interactive displays on the roof, on the interior roof of the bus, and also the bus would be painted. So it would look like when the Minds in Motion bus comes rolling into your community. And this would go to every corner, every hamlet, every specific area of Waukesha County for kids to benefit. We would visit every single school, and especially, we're very interested in reaching out to those schools in the more rural areas. All right, Brian, you want to... That's what that would look like. And if you take, those are all examples of mobile museums around the country. New Jersey has an interactive museum. There's a National Museum of History out in California. There's one in Brooklyn. And this has become more and more a popular way of bringing a museum to a classroom that is low cost for the school. We could take our exhibits out there, and we really want kids to be able to interact and do hands-on activities. One of the things that has been proven with this is the level of retention, the level of application. And also, the main idea about a children's museum is engagement. There, you see kids really working with each other. And there's a saying in education today, the kids that are doing the talking are the ones that are doing the learning. The idea of when I went to school back in the Dark Ages where kids sat and a teacher spoke, that is no longer the best practice. And our companies that we have spoken to, one is in Los Angeles, one is in Whitehaven, Pennsylvania, in the Poconos, and one is in Grove City, Ohio. This is another example. There's a National Museum of, I think it's, I don't exactly, National Museum of Tolerance, and that's out in Los Angeles. And one of the companies that we talked to actually repurposed that bus. So there are many, many, many different ways that we could go. If this, what we'd like to do is fill this with exhibits that are interactive, that are interchangeable, and that would provide the most learning availability. So we got the bus for free, but now we need money to convert this bus to a mobile museum. Can you pass that on to the next slide? So what's that going to cost? This was the bid that we liked the most. This comes from a company out in Whitehaven, Pennsylvania, close to the Poconos. It's closest to the eastern shore. The cost is $188,000 to refurbish the bus. I think there's probably some wiggle room in here to change it from certain things around, but that gives you a ballpark figure of what that would cost to make that bus that's going to be given to us for free, make it usable for school-aged children. And that would go all over the place. We would be able to park it at the mall, and it would be kind of a central focal point for the district. It's almost like when the bookmobiles used to roll into town, and this would be very much the same thing, but it would be a museum. Now, the other part of this is exhibits. This is what it costs to bring that up to looking like a museum inside. It does not include the cost of the exhibits. I've been dealing with a man, there are several different companies, one's in Indiana, one's in Minnesota, one's in New York, that provide the exhibits for museums. And I'm told to allocate about $50,000. So by the time we would finish this, if we go with this plan, it would be about $230,000. However, you would have the capacity to reach 15,000 schoolchildren just in Waukesha County alone, 30,000 along the eastern shore, and it would be a real launch for our, for the brick-and-mortar museum that we hope to be into within a reasonable length of time. All right, you want to show that last slide? All right. And once again, you see kids that are interacting. Those are all interactive displays, kids working together, and it really helps students right now to make a difference. I think we've all, you don't have to walk any further than your front door to see the impact that COVID has had on learning, but also even before that. I mean, when you're talking about a school district where two out of three children receive free and reduced lunch or qualify for free and reduced lunch, there's a very high incidence between, high correlation between low test scores and low attendance. And we also have the ongoing problem of trying to reach math proficiency, as well as our graduation rate is below the state graduation rate. All right, final slide. We'll show what the outside would look like, and that just gives you one idea. So what I came here tonight to ask for, and I was very happy to sit and listen to the other workings of the county council, it's very interesting to see how the council works, we really want to have something, some mobile part of us for Minds in Motion that would go around the county, visit classrooms, visit science classes, visit community centers, visit summer camps, be a venue for birthday parties, all of those different things that would not only generate revenue, but also would really provide a very interactive learning experience. And we feel that once this, once we get this on the road, we feel that we would qualify for a lot more donors, for a lot more grants. We're in the process now of starting a capital campaign where we will ask money from every law office, from every insurance company, from every medical practice. We will offer naming rights for certain schools, for certain rooms in the museum. But right now, this is our baby. And this bus becomes available June 15th, and it takes about two months to retrofit a bus like that. And we'd love to have it on the road by the opening of the new academic year. So if you take a look at your packet, that includes, in the order which I'm going to tell you about, a copy of this PowerPoint, a little bit of background on Minds in Motion, a copy of the application I submitted for your letter of support, if you're willing to offer one, all of our financials, and then the final page is the budget. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Josh.
Thank you for being here, by the way. This is exciting to see. Questions? First of all, I guess for your, this is a state bond bill request, is that correct?
Yes.
Do you have a current number in mind and/or sponsor?
Yes, $100,000 in Senator Record.
Okay. And then last question, I guess, just, is this targeted any specific, I heard a lot of general outreach, is this targeted any specific communities or any specific, is it science-oriented? Is this more preschool?
You know, all of...
You know, what are we targeting here?
We would probably look very, very heavily at STEM-related activities, in STEM, science, technology, engineering, math, any kind of interactive activities. I think we would start with very young children and work our way up. We really want to target young children and make them more prepared for kindergarten. We really, there's a big push now for universal pre-K. I myself was a principal in a building where the kids came to school not ready to learn. They did not have the, when they went to the zoo, they went to the zoo. Their mom didn't say, "Let's stop at the library and take out books and read about dinosaurs or elephants," or anything like that. We really want to make kids to where they're inquisitive, they're asking questions, they're solving problems, they're making discovery, explanation, creativity. But obviously, we really want to extend this to where it's a K, pre-K through 12 facility. So we would want to use it not only in our elementary preschool and elementary schools, but also in our middle schools. And a lot of times, what we ideally like to do, what Minds in Motion was really designed to do, was to go up through the high school years and also as a training facility for Salisbury University, for them to offer their interns to work in the education section of the Minds in Motion Museum.
Sure.
Have you presented this to our Board of Education?
Uh, yes.
So any response for them? Are they giving you a letter?
No.
No?
No. I have not formally presented this. I've approached the superintendent multiple times about this.
So there's no support from them?
Well, you know, I don't want to say that there's no support. You know, and I was just talking to a colleague about this today. There are so many demands on schools that right now, if you take a look at what they're funding in the school district, and I don't want to speak out of turn, I've got great expense, respect for Dr. Hamel and her team, everything goes towards raising test scores. And that's not just here. That's a universal, that's a united, that's a national term.
I realize you're not asking them for money. You're asking for support for a letter.
Right, right.
So you've not asked them for a support for a letter yet?
And I think for these legislative bond bills, they need a letter of support from the local government body, not...
I would say the school, the school system would be where to start with this because this is a teaching aid, right?
Well, I mean, it's not under education. It's an independent, separate from the public school system.
The thing is, if you do that, then you would have to go to the private schools. Then there's another sector. I'm not, I'm not saying we wouldn't do that. I really felt that going to our local government and having a show of support from that, would it make it possible for us to receive more grants, that we would be able to approach different funding opportunities and do that?
Don't you think that if you had support from the schools, you would get more grants too?
I will tell you...
The more, the better, you know?
I will tell you that when I have gone to the schools for different things, I haven't been told, "No," but I have not been invited in to do what you folks were good enough to do for me tonight.
And again, this is a legislative bond bill that they're asking for. So this would be the local governing body that would have to send a letter of support. It would not be, it wouldn't be relevant to the Board of Education.
But I'm like, Joe, if you're going to be visiting the schools, don't you think you should have the support of the schools?
Oh, we'll have the support in terms of, they would love to have this come out there. They would love to have that. But that is from a teacher point of view and a principal point of view. If I would go to the school district, you're talking about an upper layer of administration that is bogged down in a lot of other things right now.
But they're the ones that are going to prove you coming onto the school property.
I mean, it's not just...
Hold on. But they're not the ones that are going to prove you coming onto those school properties. The upper level is the one that's going to allow you on that school property.
Yeah, but I understand what you're saying. And again, I have not been encouraged, when I've mentioned things like this, I have not been encouraged to go to them. In fact, Dr. Hamel has been good about writing a letter of non-financial support for other initiatives that I've worked on. But for something like this, it didn't even occur to me to do that because I don't see it as strictly an educational thing.
Joe, what were you going to say?
Will you be, so I know you mentioned that you would be going to schools, but are you going other places, community centers?
Oh, yeah, we would go to community centers.
Yeah, this is just one of multiple places.
We would go to neighborhoods. Yeah. And what we'd really like to do is reach out to communities in need. So under served communities, we would really like to go out and do things like that.
And I think that's really what stood out to me when I looked at this project, is the outreach in the rural communities that you'll be doing. That's something we are desperately in the...
Right. Yeah, schools are one of the places we would go to. But there are boys and girls clubs, there are after-school programs, there are, you know, communities where on Saturday we'd like to have a Minds in Motion Day and go out and put up, you know, food and so on and so forth.
And she even said birthday parties.
Yes, yeah.
Birthday party.
Yes.
How do you align your program with the current curriculum?
With this? The Minds, the Association of Children's Museums, their curriculum is all aligned with the Common Core. And so what they do is line up their standards with what's being taught in the schools. Now, and basically, it doesn't come down to, you know, matching one for one, but basically, it adheres to STEM standards and reflects a curriculum that's indicative of that. And there's a whole Association of Children's Museums that if you go across the country, they have things on, and a lot of it is local. They will do things on...
Where is the oversight? The reason I ask that is because, you know, the Board of Education is very controlled structure with accountability from all aspects.
Right.
And I'm wondering if you change your curriculum from STEM and you shift in another direction, where is there some accountability that...
Well, but I mean, even if we change it from STEM to math concepts, I mean, STEM is such a wide berth that it would change, you know, it would contain elements of every one of that. If you decided to do an engineering thing on how machines work, it would be like that. If you would do it on, let's say you do something for Black History Month, STEM has oftentimes become STEAM and talks about the arts. So it's a pretty comprehensive, all-inclusive curriculum. So I don't see getting any pushback that way at all. I can't imagine that there would be any discussion on that. You know, if you would go in and teach a certain ideology, that would be way controversial, especially in today's educational climate.
Yeah, because it's, it is, I mean, you see, there are so many different perspectives that are taking over, and so many, in politics as well, taking over the educational systems.
Right, right, right.
That's why I was wondering, where is your accountability? Where does that come in? I mean, what guidelines are you required to follow?
Well, the American Children's Museum Organization, their umbrella organization, has best practices, and we would fall into that. And, you know, that includes, that encompasses many different things. And if you would go to any children's museum across the country, you would pretty much find that that's the general guidelines that they're following. In no way would it do something, I mean, in best practices, you just don't stray and present material that would be considered controversial.
Any other questions? We're asking for a letter of, yes, Laura?
Can I just clarify the amount of grant funding that you're seeking? The application mentions $250,000. Is that the amount that you're...
Well, we need $250,000 for this project. Obviously, we would like to go as high, we would like to receive the maximum amount. So it would be up to this board, this governing body, to decide how much of that you're willing to ask for and willing to support. I think, you know, if the amount is $100,000, we certainly would work very hard to make up the added amount that we have to make up for that. If we would get $60,000, we'd have to work harder to make up the amount.
And I think that that dollar amount that's allocated depends on the other projects of legislative bond bills. So depending on what else Senator Record has, it would, that would determine it.
Yeah, I would think we would do the $250,000, and then the state legislature can decide if that's too much.
Right.
I mean, we're not asking for the bond bill. You are, right?
Right.
So what are you asking for?
A letter of support for the community.
A letter of support.
For how much money?
For $250,000.
Oh, okay. Any other questions, comments? So we'll take a consensus. Where are we? Larry?
I had been giving it some thought. It sounded like she laid it on us that we have to come up with the figure, and we're not the ones asking for the money.
No, what we're doing is just suggesting, no, we don't have, we're not, it's no financial obligation on our part.
Right, I get that. But it seems like she's throwing the ball in our cart.
Well, she's just saying they need $250,000.
Well, let me take the ball back. I'm asking for you to write a letter of support for $250,000.
And the letter is drafted that way. That's why I brought it up. I just wanted to clarify that that was the correct amount.
And if the state decides to choose lesser, then they take the less amount. So where are we?
Quick question. This bus that's being donated to you, what year did you say it was, and how many miles is on it?
It's a 2008.
It'll be 15 years old.
And I don't know how many miles. It has been recently inspected. It was deemed to be in good condition. And I addressed that in the application. I said there would be a maintenance clause with this. And also, if this got to the point where it was going to cost us more to keep this bus on the road, then it would become a stationary bus, and we would still have groups come in and use it.
I'm just, hey, I'm not trying to manage your business, but I'm just looking at this saying, you're spending $240,000, $250,000 on a 15-year-old bus. It's probably got 100,000 miles on it.
Easy.
So, or more. That's your business. Anyway.
Larry?
Go ahead.
Joe?
You know, I can't hear you. Use your mic.
Say it doesn't matter one way or the other. Yeah, go ahead. Okay, Ernie?
I just don't think that we should be asking, well, the letters should say that we support them in asking for $250,000.
That's right.
You're right.
That's what I requested.
You're right. Is that satisfactory?
It's not coming out of, it's not coming out of any county.
No.
Yeah, they said that they, we're supporting their request for $250,000, not that we're lying with it.
Correct. You're right. Is that okay? Okay. Bill?
I'm good.
Josh? Nicole?
I think it's an excellent idea.
Chair votes in favor, so unanimously, we'll get a letter for you. Mrs. Hurley's really quick with that. She probably already has it ready.
It's in your briefbook.
Oh, it is. All right, thank you. We'll have it ready for you by tomorrow.
Thank you so much. And thank you for having me here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks again. You know, I never saw it in the briefbook because when I clicked on that, it never went down there. So I figured we didn't have information on it.
Oh, the bookmark didn't?
The bookmark didn't do it. So I was at the open work session number four, and then I clicked on number five, and it didn't go any further down. So I assumed that the information was going to be put on the table.
That occasionally happens.
Yeah. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Dunn and Mr. Wilber. Sorry to hold you up. Thank you very much for being so conscientious. We are very, very close. So I think we had wrapped up the Lindsey Rader discussion. Am I correct?
Yep.
And the other item, before we get really excited and go to 314A as the last item, I neglected to point out a couple of very serious, I think, issues we had to adjust in section, we had to consider in Section 204, which were issues that I think the council had initially had concern over. One was 204B. And 204B, it's, this is pretty much of a simple one. It says Compensation Allowance Commission, and it says that the county council shall establish commission power to recommend the county council compensation and allow it to be paid, and for the county council and the county executive. So the question for the council is whether we should add the sheriff to this. The sheriff is obligated, just as the county executive, to an only four-year obligation. Every four years can get a raise. So since the county, since the compensation committee has done the sheriff, should be just included in here.
I guess my only question is, do we know why? You know, can anyone address the issue as to, you know, why it wasn't in here?
We looked, to the best of my recollection, and I'll, we didn't think about it because the sheriff isn't in... the sheriff isn't in the charter, and so we did not consider, to the best of my recollection, adding the sheriff to the work of the Compensation Review Committee. Whether we should have or not, I don't know, but we just looked at, it said county council and county executive. That's, I don't know if that's the right answer or not, but—
No, it is.
—we just didn't give it a whole lot of thought. I'm sorry.
I think the reason the question came up is because it is in state law. Here, it talks about the executive and the sheriff, and so we're obligated to make that decision, so if we are, we should create an obligation for the committee to help us with that.
Not disagreeing.
Yeah.
If, if, if the charter said county executive, county council, and sheriff, I'm sure we'd have looked at it in the same way, but it simply did not include the sheriff. So, we just, I think, kind of felt that that was out of our obligation, if you will. And again, that's something that the council could take a look at.
Okay. Yes, Josh?
Just one question, is the, I'm okay with that.
Is everyone okay with that? Since we do it anyway? All right, Josh?
And then adding on to that, the 204B1—
Yes.
Is this, just, I know I've asked this before, but make good clarity, is this state law that says that the commission shall set the compensation allowances within 15 days after the beginning of the fourth year term of each council?
That is state law.
Because we, about five years ago or so, I was on the previous Compensation Review Committee, and as you will all recall, we then made the recommendation to move, when the Compensation Review Committee does its work, away from an election year. We thought then, and I believe the current Compensation Committee did too, but I'm not speaking for them, because you find yourselves now having to deal with compensation in an election year, and it's just awkward. And we attempted to look into that, but Mr. Wilber determined that we kind of weren't allowed, yeah.
So, we'll have to maybe, as a council, review going to the state and trying to make a change before the next cycle, and it won't be this council, it'll be the next.
Yeah, we definitely thought, again, it places all of, it just places you all in an awkward position, and we think it would, our recommendation from five years ago in this charter review, move it, there's an election right now, 2022, so maybe the Compensation Review Committee is established in 2023 or 2024, on the front end of four-year terms, not in the back end of an election year, that's all.
The only other thing in 204, under 204B4, it all, it talks about the bill, bill making any changes in salary paid to the members of the county council, it's something about the executive. So, since we haven't corrected the sheriff, that's a state issue, but should we correct this, since obviously we have a county executive that doesn't say anything about it? Mr. Wilber?
I think it was, we have these two ways of adopting whatever you wish, in the resolution or bill, and if you want to make it across the board.
Well, if we don't have to change the charter, and we can still do it in an easier way, we, you're saying that there's another way we can do it?
Well, it's, it says bill here, so that's what we're using for the council.
Mm-hmm.
You'd like to change it?
Oh, so you're saying that the sheriff would stay as a resolution as opposed to a bill?
Right, I think the executive and sheriff would be resolution.
Okay, all right, thank you, that answers that. The only other thing, Michael, is that in Section 304C, the council was somewhat relatively adamant in trying to address an issue where, right now, it says, "Experts, consultants, attorneys, the council may at its discretion, subject to the provisions in its budget or supplementary appropriation, by resolution engage the services of experts, consultants, or attorneys to aid in its inquiries, investigations, et cetera." The council came into a really huge problem there, where we wanted to have a forensic auditor, and we certainly didn't want to announce through a resolution that we were going to have a forensic auditor, because then everyone who's subject to a forensic auditor, all of a sudden, the antenna go up, and we don't have a case. So, what do you think, Mr. Wilber? Is that something that should possibly be changed if the council doesn't want to have to necessarily be tied to a resolution? You want to think about it? Since I just put it on you?
I think of just how properly, essentially, to authorize it, but achieve the, we'll say the confidentiality that you are suggesting.
Right. Okay.
We went down that road really only as it had to do with the council attorney and a county attorney. We kind of didn't go down to these other categories that you're talking about there, Mr. President.
Okay, okay, thank you. Mr. Wilber, then you will get back to us on that, all right?
I'm making a note right now.
Okay. So, we're at 314A, unless anyone has anything they want to bring up before 314A. So, we have 314A where it's to delete the word "generally" and insert the words "unless for the purpose of inquiry or information." As the council notes, 314A specifically is that real thorn in our side, where it's been demanded before that we couldn't talk to any department heads. So, if a constituent called you and had a problem with the road, technically, you can't call roads and say, "There's a problem," and that you have to go through the county executive. And it's not often a really good example, answer to a constituent to say, "Well, I'll pass that on to the county executive," because the first thing they want to know is why you're representing, why you're elected, why you're representing them. So, it was recommended that Section 314 says that, and it was a good suggestion, I think, to delete the word "generally" and to put in that headliner of "A," "unless for the purpose of inquiry and information," which means it allows us to do inquiry for information, right?
This kind of leads back into kind of, is this a people problem or a charter problem, if you will, if there's better lines of communication flowing between whomever is the county executive and whoever the sitting members of the council are. That's where our brain was. But we are very aware that this is touchy and tricky territory, and we just thought that by kind of clarifying that a little bit, that would provide just a better opportunity for that communication.
And we appreciate you recognizing that. Any, anything from councils, is everyone okay with how this has been phrased? All right, we're good. Michael, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I want to add to each of you, you know, you do honor to the 15 people that you appointed by doing what you did tonight, and we appreciate it. And as I said earlier, all we were hoping was that a serious discussion of our recommendations would take place, and on behalf of the 15 members of the Charter Review Committee, if you continue down this path like this, you'll have 15 citizens are very happy with just the fact that there's been deliberation in a good way, so thank you very much.
Well, good, thank you. If we can only live up to that, because I know the work that they did was fantastic, and what you did, so thank you again for taking the time to be here, Michael, because you could be home right now, we all know that.
Correct, have a great night, everyone.
We'll see you again in two weeks.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
There is one more that's on the list of questions that were submitted to the Charter Review Committee.
Okay.
That's Section 315 on the confirmation of appointments, and the question is, should the confirmations be done before a person is hired?
Thank you for letting me know that. We will put that on, first on the list the next time we meet. Thank you very much. Any other questions from the council? I think we're at, I've already exited out of my briefbook, entertain a motion to adjourn to go into a closed session.
To move.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No public comments.
No public comments, Bob, sorry.
If I could address this, you may all be aware that an issue came up this morning as to whether this could be conducted as a closed session under administrative exception. It's a pretty close call, but in talking with the council administrator and the internal auditor, it appears that what's really going to happen here is not an administrative function so much as it's going to be a staff report, that the internal auditor is going to lay out where, some status issues, where he's planning going, things like that. And so long as the, and the council, even with the quorum here, it does not qualify for Open Meetings Regulation, so long as the council recognizes that the session is being conducted by the internal auditor, and you can question him and things of that nature, you can participate, just like you would, but you can't then amongst yourselves start coming up with policy and legislation issues. He's just going to report to you, and you can find information from him, and then you're within the Open Meetings Act, it's not a problem.
Is there, you know, I read the concerns, and I guess, from what you just said, is there any big secrets here that you're going to reveal?
I, there, I wouldn't say there's any big secrets, but—
Justifies closing a meeting.
Yeah, I wouldn't have this meeting an open session, if that's what you're asking.
Well, I will abide by your recommendation, and we have legal, we have legal advice here that's supporting it, so we'll go, we'll go ahead.
When I talked to him, to Levin earlier today, he said, yeah, there is a level that he could, he could give you an open session, but depending on what questions he might have, he would not be able to fully answer them in an open session, so that's the reason it's closed.
Okay, if we could, so we can move on, thank you.